Good morning. It is Friday, July 14th. Thank you, Mr. Weisar, Ms. Perry, Mr. Weiss, Mr. Zine, and Mr. Garcetti. I would ask our other members to come down to the council chambers. That would include Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Wesson, to come down to the city council chambers so we can begin our meeting. I know that we have a bare quorum this morning, so if we could ask everyone to please make their way down to the city council chambers. Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Perry today. This is the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. We meet Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and we are going to begin our presentations for Friday. I'd like to acknowledge again Ms. Perry for a special presentation.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. We're assembling the Operation Confidence Positive redirection team. It's a long title. Oh, yeah, it's perfect. Yeah, and if everybody wants, you can just sit in front of, or in front if you want. If you want, do that. It's okay. Very proud to be joined by this team today comprising the team is Consuela Mackey, founder and executive director of Operation Confidence, Brom Wells, director of operations, Nina Castillo, office manager, Chris James, assistant office manager, Atiana Pasqua, executive director of a Save a Soul Foundation, Angela Rockwood, who is a member of the team, Dr. George Bell, Steve Mitchell, who is an assistant to Dr. Bell. Did I say everybody's name? Okay, good. I'm very honored to be joined by this team today, the Operation Confidence's Positive redirection team who recently hosted the Despite My Disability event at the Union Rescue Mission. With me today is Consuela Mackey, who founded Operation Confidence in 1980 as a grassroots nonprofit organization. Today, the organization provides job preparation workshops and search for employment opportunities for individuals with physical challenges. In its 26-year history, Operation Confidence has assisted over 10,000 individuals gain meaningful employment and independent living through their job fairs, Dress for Success program, recruitment efforts, job preparation workshops, national newsletter, and outreach efforts. In 2000, the Totally Confident Positive redirection team was created to bring awareness about the outstanding contributions made by people with disabilities, mentor to students in middle and high schools, assist in taking away the stereotyping of people with a disability, and help to establish an inclusive society for all mankind. Operation Confidence is a member of the MTA Accessibility Advisory Board and on the Los Angeles Sheriff Executive Clergy Board. I really wanted to take this opportunity to thank them publicly for their work in our community and empowering people to achieve their goals. And today, I'd like to just name or introduce the members of the team to all of you and to personally thank them. Atiana Pasqua, Brom Wells, Chris James, Nina Castillo, Nina Castillo, okay, and Angela Rockwood Nguyen. Angela also functions as a proud spokesperson for the Christopher and Dana Reeve Foundation, where she carries on the legacy of Christopher Reeve and assists with their minority outreach campaign educating millions around the globe. Dr. George Bell, and Stephen Thomas Mitchell. And I'd like to ask Ms. Mackey, the executive director, she'd just like to say a few words about their mission.
Thank you. Councilman Perry has been so wonderful to our organization. Operation Confidence is very happy to be here today and to represent our Positive redirection team, a team of amazing individuals in wheelchairs and some with other disabilities go out into the community to mentor, to consult, and are actual life coaches to many individuals out there. They're doing something that's amazing, and I'm so thankful to the Union Rescue Mission for allowing the team to come out and give a presentation workshop where Councilman Perry was there with her chief of staff and acknowledged the presence of our team and the impact that they left on the residents is something amazing that we are all thankful to be here. And this is because of Dr. Bell and Steve and a lot of work that we want to do in the community, and we want to just thank the city council and of course, Councilman Perry for allowing this to happen and to thank you for acknowledging us today.
My pleasure. Thank you very much. Thank you. We'll go retire to the back and take a nice picture.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Appreciate you all being here. I'd like to acknowledge our next presenter is Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Madam President and members. It's Happy Friday because today we've got a young little puppy that's looking for a home. He's just been, he's received all his shots, he's been neutered, he's been microchipped. He is a long-haired Chihuahua mix. They have nicknamed him Chips because of the coloring, and he's got chips on his little body. I tell you, we've got six shelters in the city of Los Angeles with hundreds of dogs and cats and other animals that are looking for a home. So if anybody out there wants to take little chips home where he will be, give you unconditional love, you can call 888-452-7381. Again, 888-452-7381. Somebody's got a great friend that they're gonna get caught, look at that face. Look at that. If somebody said you adopt him, I want to tell you, I was on the phone with my wife and she said four dogs is more than enough. Okay, so somebody, Jose Weisar is looking for a home. Anyway, again, if anybody's interested in chips and don't be upset if he's not available, again, we have hundreds of dogs, please call 888-452-7381. Thank you.
I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Rosendahl. Is he here, Mr. Rosendahl, for the next presentation?
Madam President, thank you for giving me this opportunity to make a presentation. You know, everything moves so fast. There's beginning and ends, opening and closes all through our lives. I ran for office just two years ago. I've been in office now one year, and the first thing I want to do is thank all my colleagues that gave me a warm welcome to the city council and helped me work through the issues that a rookie would work through. And I am very grateful for all of you for being there for me when I ran for office. I'd like to say that as you become a candidate and you get out there, you build an organization, you get a campaign going, you get people who believe in who you are, and then the fortunate thing is if you do win, you have an opportunity to bring on your staff people who are really bright, really dedicated, and really make a difference with their lives. Well, Stephanie Zorro, who is leaving us after one year with me, who's been a deputy planner, learning everything about planning in great community meetings, and many of you know, in the 11th district, we have more planning issues to deal with than most of the other districts combined since this location, location, location. She's bright, she's strong, she's honest, she has integrity, and we love her to death, but life goes on. She's a young lady, and Harvard is banging on her door, and she's going to go to Harvard Law School in the fall. So we're gonna lose her for a while, and it will be Harvard's gain. I'd like to just, if it's okay, Madam President, Mike Bonin, who was with her many different reincarnations, as we say, and was my chief of staff in the campaign, chief of staff now, who will introduce not only Stephanie, but soon-to-be her husband. Mike Bonin.
Stephanie, come up for a second. I just wanted to say a couple of words about Stephanie, and I thank the councilman for the opportunity. In the time I've been in public service and before that in journalism, I've had the opportunity to hire probably about 100 people. And Stephanie is unique in that I hired her three times. I hired her, she was volunteering for Mike Gordon, and I hired her to work for Jane Harmon's campaign, and then I hired her to work for Bill's campaign, and then I hired her to work for Bill here at City Hall. She is an amazing person. I cannot imagine not working with her by my side. It's going to be a huge loss without her. It will be much quieter without her around. I will spend much less time answering questions, but I'll be a much less happy guy without her. She is the most inquisitive person I know. She has an incredible intelligence and a lively spirit, and everybody on our team and in our district who has interacted with her is going to miss her dearly.
Harvard's gain is LA's loss at the moment, okay?
We expect her back, though, so.
When she gets that law degree and comes back, we're gonna woo her to bring her right back into city government. She's been an incredible asset to my office and to the city. We have a Humble Certificate signed by the mayor and the city council and everybody else. There it is like that. There you go.
Thank you.
God bless you. Introduce your husband soon-to-be. She's getting married.
So, yeah, besides going to law school, I'm getting married in two weeks. Countdown, T minus 15 days. This is my future husband, Volta Alvanasian. So you all know me as Stephanie Zorro right now, but I'll be Stephanie Alvanasian in two weeks. So, when I get back. Thank you all, and thank you very much, Madam President. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Madam President. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Reyes for the next presentation. Mr. Reyes, before you do your presentation, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Reyes, if Mr. Reyes could hold on, before you do your presentation, we're gonna run through the agenda real quickly because we do have a quorum. Madam Clerk, could you open the roll?
Cardinals Grohan, Weisar, Laban, Spadia Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendell, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present in the quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. First item.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Garcetti moves, Ms. Perry seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those have been approved.
First item on the agenda, Madam President, before, there's a request to continue items 29 and 31 until September 19th.
Okay, and I think also a request to continue item 41 till Tuesday.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, colleagues, unless there is any opposition to that, we will continue those items as acknowledged. Next items.
First items on the agenda are items noticed for public hearings. Items 1 through 5, the recommendation for council action is to open the hearings and continue the hearings and ordinances to August 4th.
They will be opened and continued to August 4th.
Next items are items 6 through 12. Those are also public hearing items. They're street lighting ordinances.
Seeing no one asking those items to be called special, Madam Clerk, if you could open the roll on those items, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Those items have been approved.
And the ordinances will go over to, for one week, to July 21st.
Great. Thank you.
Next items are items which public hearings have been held, items 13 through 21. Reports have been submitted on 13, 14, 15, and 20.
Okay. Any specials, colleagues, on those items? Any specials? If not, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes. And the ordinance on item number 13 will go over for one week.
Thank you. Next items.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, 22 through 39. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Yes, and we do have item number 30, which requires a public hearing. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam President.
So that item, we do have a card on that item. Colleagues, any specials? Any specials? If not, Madam Clerk, if you could open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Those items have been approved.
And the ordinances on 22 through 28 will go over.
Thank you.
Our next item on the continuation agenda is item number 40, and that's confirmation of a commissioner, Ms. Carmen Schroeder, to the North Valley APC. Do you wish to take that up at this time?
We'll hold that on the desk.
That concludes the regular agenda, Madam President. Do you wish to recess the regular meeting and go take up the special meeting?
Please. If we could, we'll recess and call the roll.
Cardinals Grohan, Weisar, Laban, Spadia Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendell, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present in the quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. First item.
The two items on the agenda are both items for which public hearings have not been held, and one is a parcel map and one is a track map.
Okay. Any of those items called special on the special agenda? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Those items have been approved.
And that concludes the special agenda.
Thank you. We'll adjourn the special agenda and go back to the regular agenda.
Madam President, do you wish to take up the items called special at this time?
No, I believe we'll continue on presentation, so I'd like to again acknowledge Mr. Reyes for a special presentation.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning, colleagues. Every once in a while, we get to recognize and acknowledge many of those employees who take an extra step, rise to occasion to help others, and today we have the opportunity, when we say goodbye to Edward Al Pina, sheet metal worker for the Department of General Services, Construction and Forces Division, who is retiring after 31 years of service, the people of the city of Los Angeles. Give him a round of applause. 31 years serving our city. I was hoping Councilman Cardinals will be joining us. I know he chairs the committee, so as soon as he gets in, I'd love to have him join at the podium. at the podium. Edward began his career as an exempt maintenance and construction helper on January 20th, 1975, and worked that capacity with the Department of Public Works until he was promoted to a regular position in 1978 with the Department of Recreation and Parks. He was appointed to a mechanical repair one position on an emergency appointment in 1980 at Recreation and Parks, where later that year he promoted to a sheet metal worker with the Department of General Services. In spite of a serious injury he suffered while on duty in 1996 in a ladder accident at the construction site of a temporary fire station number 78 that threatened to end his career, he returned in 1998 to full unrestricted active duty as a sheet metal worker with Construction Forces Division. So he made a comeback after serious injury, and the beauty of it is that it's the way he's done it. This accident not only did not stop him, but it inspired him to become an advocate for ladder safety within the sheet metal crew and all the Construction Forces Division, working many hours to promote safety and improve work conditions for his fellow employees. Over the years, he has assisted at numerous charity and fundraising events sponsored by the division for the benefit of many needy Angelenos by performing five-star cooking and grilling at countless events. He has truly represented our city and his department with great distinction. While I work today, is your day, I hear you plan on doing some fishing and traveling. My only hope is that you don't travel too far away from a city that needs people like you. We want to thank his wife, Terry, who's also a city employee. Thank you, Terry. Next to every great man is a great woman, his son Aaron, and his grandson Matthew. You know, let's give him a round of applause, folks. You know, in Spanish, there's an affectionate term called tocayo. When a person has your name, instead of greeting them with his proper name, you call him tocayo because we share names. So I'm very proud to call Edward Pina my tocayo, and for all the heart and the warmth that you bring to your job, and all the safety concerns that you've highlighted, to save other people's lives and keep them from getting injured. Congratulations, and thanks for all your services.
Thank you very much. Madam President and fellow council members, it was an honor and a privilege to receive this, and it was an honor and privilege to work for the City of Los Angeles for 31 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and congratulations. Mr. Reyes, do you have another presentation?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. You know, colleagues, we keep talking about Los Angeles as a pivotal point in our world economy. We talk about it as a transition point for many of the world's population. It has made our city richer, it has created relationships throughout the country, and today I'd like to present a resolution that's signed by the mayor. We were hoping he would join us this morning, along with my colleagues, the city attorney, the city comptroller, and our city clerk, and it's to recognize TACA, Transportes Aire de el Continente Americano. They have provided a service to this city, to this country, indeed to this continent, for 75 years. It has allowed us to maintain our family relationships, has allowed us to stimulate our business environment, and they have provided this service for 75 years. Today, we are here to recognize this business, only helps us to maintain our business dealings with Latin America, but for the 75 years it's helped us to maintain our family ties with our tios and tias, mothers and fathers, friends and relatives. Today, we are here to honor TACA Airlines. Let's give them a round of applause, folks. They deserve it. TACA Transportes Aire de el Continente Americano was first established in Honduras as Transportes Aire de Centroamericanos in 1931 by a New Zealander pilot of the Royal Canadian Air Force. Today, TACA is the only airline in Latin America that offers more direct service between Central America, the United States, Canada, the Caribbean, and South America. It is the only airline that flies to all Central American nations and almost all of South America. It has been expanded to U.S. gateways, 10 U.S. gateways in Boston, Chicago, O'Hare, Dallas, Houston, Los Angeles, Miami, New Orleans, New York, John F. Kennedy, San Francisco, Toronto, and Washington, Dulles. This morning, we're honored to have with us Eduardo Ortiz, Commercial Vice President, Ricardo Granillo, Marketing Director, Susana Ayarza, Loyalty Program Manager with Distancia, Rodrigo Gutierrez, Loyalty Program Administrator with Distancia, Jaime Melada, Regional Sales Manager with Southwest TACA Airlines, and we have our distinguished guests and community advocates, we have Carlos Vaqueroano with us. So I'd like to thank them, our distinguished guests, for the priority they have set for our families, for serving our community. We have one of the largest Salvadoran communities in Los Angeles. Most Central American communities have the largest bases of their population here in Los Angeles, and for their strong support, I want to thank them for their great business and stimulating our economy, not only for Los Angeles, but the Southwest United States. I'd like to provide this resolution to TACA representatives. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. On behalf of TACA Airlines, it is, we're honored to receive this resolution and acknowledgement from the City of Los Angeles. TACA Airlines, we are celebrating this year 75 years of operation. We are currently serving 19 countries and 35 cities across the continent. We believe, and continue to believe, to invest and grow in the great community of Los Angeles. We are currently transporting more than 250,000 passengers out of LAX. We have been actively and successfully involved, not only with the Salvadoran community, but the Central American and Latin American community in general, supporting programs of academic excellence and sports, and we will continue to do that in the coming years as well. I would like especially to thank the City Council and the council members, and especially Councilor Reyes, for this important and valuable acknowledgement of our effort to continue supporting and growing in the Los Angeles community. So for that, and we thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, first item, I believe, is, the Commissioner will take first, item number 40.
Yes, and that's confirmation of Ms. Carmen Schroder to the North Valley APC.
Yes, is she here? Please, come on in. Welcome, you can sit at the table. I think Mr. Reyes stepped out as the Chair of the Planning and Land Use Committee, but maybe if you could just tell us a little bit about your background and interest in serving on the North Valley Area Planning Commission.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Currently, I'm working for the Los Angeles Unified School District as Local District Five Superintendent, and in this job, and in the job that I had prior, I have worked with the planning and organizing of, the building of centers and schools, and so I have had an extensive amount of time and experience in the development of communities as it relates to schools and early education centers, and so I have been involved with the facilities managers in that area. So I, this is an area that's of importance to me. I live in that part of town, and I have been there for 23 years.
Thank you, and we're so pleased. Mr. Wezar.
I just want to stand up and fully support Ms. Schroder's appointment to this commission. You know, council members, we have before us one of eight local superintendents who work directly with the superintendent of LA Unified to operate and manage this district, and Ms. Schroder comes to us with a wide variety of experience, and when I was on the school board, I had the pleasure of working most of that time with her when she was the Director of the Early Childhood, is that correct name? What's the correct name of the Early Childhood Education Division, where she really displayed her passion and strong work ethic and concern about the community, and it's great to see you now giving your time to the Planning Commission, where I think there's going to be a stronger linkage between our schools and the commission with your knowledge and understanding of the school district, and I do think that's something that's missing in terms of how we really relate to each other and talk to each other at the community level between the school district and the city. I know that our neighborhood councils, if you walk into any one of their meetings, you know, a large percentage of their time, sometimes they talk about schools and trying to create those linkages, so with your relationship with the school district and being on this commission, I think it's a great one, and I want to thank you for your commitment to the children of Los Angeles and for your willingness to provide whatever free time you have to serve on this commission. Thank you so much, Ms. Schroder.
Thank you so much. We're pleased that you're going to be serving on the North Valley APC. Many of those of us are represented, I think Mr. Cardenas' district, Mr. Bedia's district, Mr. Smith's district, and my district are all part of that area, so we look forward to working with you as a Commissioner. Madam Clerk, if you could open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
10 ayes.
Congratulations. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Next item.
Next item, Madam President, is item number 30, and that was called special for courts from the public.
Yes, Ms. Sylvia, excuse me, Ms. Velinda Jo Wright, Matt Dowd, and there's only initials, ZD. Okay, we would appreciate if you would actually put your name on this, but Velinda Jo Wright comes up first, please. Miss, I have not called you yet, until you may see, soon. Ms. Wright, Velinda Jo Wright. If not, Mr. Dowd. She's coming? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, Ms. Wright.
Hello, good morning, council members. It's nice to see you guys on a Friday. I just wanted to give you some, a public announcement, safety announcement, and I have a card for item 30 also. Here you go.
Item number 30, a public hearing was held in the Planning and Land Use Committee meeting.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, this is number 30, I apologize, it was number 40. Mr. Dowd?
Thank you very much. Just want to say hi to council. I'm back again today because I'm not happy, but I just wanted to get up and before the unanimous yes vote appears, I just want to validate whatever happens by having some public comment, because that's what they did to us. They got us up here to have our public comment, even though the vote was already taken.
Thank you. ZD?
Yeah, yeah, Zuma Dog, and I can use the word ZD as an identifying purpose under the Brown Act, so please do not ask me to require anything else after that. My name's Zuma Dog, here's my credential here, I'm in the LA Times, Zuma Dog, Fight City Hall, Wagtail in City Council's Face, so those are my credentials because I'm running for City Council. Zuma Dog is running for City Council, the chair is yet to be determined, and so my constituents want to know where I stand on the issues. So to clarify for everybody watching, number 30, what it says is that the Watts Labor Community Action Committee is supposedly in breach of its contract, so they're trying to take it away from them. Of course, the mom and pop, it says the mom and pop in home services, that's what they're finding in breach for the Watts Labor Community. Let's see how much they're going to pay when they give those contracts to people that are charging way more money to the city, y'all. That's what it's all about. It's Zuma Dog. A KCT special on PBS about me and my civic duties has been aired yesterday, and there will be more things on YouTube. The Brown Act allows me to take these speeches...
Please address to the item that's before us.
Okay, this item will be addressed on youtube.com under Zuma Dog.
Thank you very much. Yes, I understand, Mr. Weston, that we have, we want this item to be continued until Tuesday.
Until Tuesday, the organization in question, that is an error, and I want this to be removed and be part of the official record, that sentence should not be in there, and we can do that by Tuesday.
You do that on Tuesday, okay. And just for the, also the public record, a public hearing has now been held on this item, and I would appreciate, Mr. ZD, if you'd pick up the trash you threw on the floor. Thank you. Madam Clerk, so the item's been continued. Any other items?
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
We will have a 10-minute public hearing, I'll repeat that, 10-minute public hearing, one minute for each speaker. If I could ask the following individuals, Mr. Duke Russell, Candida Mares, Nico Milonopoulos are their first three speakers. Thank you, Mr. Russell, you have one minute.
President Gruel, members of the chamber, good morning, my name is Duke Russell. I was supposed to speak Wednesday, but time ran out, I understood. From here, I went to Los Angeles City College, my alma mater. I saw a temporary fence that blocked the entrance into the great men's gym, like the Jewish center that was quickly destroyed in Boyle Heights four months ago. We now have another situation. People didn't know about the synagogue, and I'm the Jewish center, but everybody here knows now that, starting today, the interior of that beautiful gym is going to be destroyed. It is needed in case of terrorist attacks in this terrorist-prone city and earthquakes. I request that President Garcetti, whose district is LACC's, contact the Board of Trustees and stop the destruction.
Thank you, Mr. Russell, appreciate it. Mr. Mares.
I wanted to talk on term limits, but as Zuma Dog's running, I don't know if we want to extend from two to three, but we'll take a look, we'll see how he attacks the issues before the council. Again, it was term limits that brought each and every one of you, and it brought these wonderful words, and Mr. Rosendahl, these words will always stay in my heart, and I need to repeat them over and over again. In my struggle to come to my understanding and my relationship with God, I finally realized that God created nature, and God makes no mistakes. So we're not a mistake, we're not an accident, we're just an expression of God's will, and that applies to each and every one of us, sir. So because of those term limits, you were able to come before us, and I wish you good health, and I hope that you're doing better, sir. But along with term limits, we have to have campaign reform, and I thank those of you who are leading this, because since 1991, I've been here, and I hear the special interest groups, what they say to you, and then what they come back here and what they really feel, and it's time that you have to, you don't have to deal with that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Nico?
I'm Nico Milonopoulos, 19-year-old co-founder of Kids Voice LA. Another senseless shooting claimed the lives of 16-year-old Anna Interiano as she walked home from school with her friends. This recent shooting comes on the heels of the gunning down of 10-year-old David Marcial, 17-year-old Luis Cervantes, and the wounding of 12-year-old Sergio Marcial Jr. These victims were not criminals, they were not gang members, they were not, they were just simply kids stripped of their lives at far too young an age, who now join the nearly 50 children killed by gunfire in the city each year. While the rewards offered in assisting to solve these crimes is admirable, the City Council must do more to prevent these malicious acts of gun violence from terrorizing our homes, plaguing our schools, and destroying our communities. This council must enact more stringent regulations on firearms and ammunition to prevent more blood of our most innocent victims from spilling onto our streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Nico. I'm going to call our, before I call our next speakers, if we could hold the time on the 6:23, if we could, 6:23, because I want to acknowledge the San Fernando Valley High School Commission that is here today, if they could all please stand, those representatives, thank you very much for being here today, appreciate it. Welcome to City Hall. Our next speakers, I will call the next three, Ahmad Jamal, Dele Alaman, and Sochi Luhon. If I could ask them to please come up?
How you doing? My name's Ahmad Jamal, I'm here representing the South Central Farmers or the Support Committee. My name's Ahmad Jamal, I'm here representing the South Central Farmers or the Support Committee. Right now, Department 18 and Superior Court, just two blocks away, the South Central Farmers with their attorneys are arguing the legality of the sale of the plot of land on 41st and Alameda. Excuse me. Now, this issue, I understand, will affect a few of the members of this council because it plays directly into the pay-for-play subject that was instrumental in getting former mayor Richard Riordan out of office. There are a lot of backroom deals that go down within this council because of what my friend here is speaking of, the, I'm sorry, I really get emotional. Right now is a very important day for the South Central Farmers. If, if the, I really would like to ask the council members that if this decision goes in our favor, that you look into it and you give the South Central Farmers the opportunity to get their land back.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Thank you, my name is Sochi Luhon, I would like to concede my time to Janet and Aracela.
Good morning, council members, my name is Janet. I have been to the South Central Farm for seven years now. I am sick and tired of you, Jan Perry, not trying to even help your own district. We, South Central Farmers, want justice, and we want it now. LAPD is doing nothing. That is not helping us. I am the future, and I am going to fight for our Mother Earth and to keep farming. We will fight for justice and no more. I want to keep farming my plants on our Mother Earth, and remember, all of us are standing on her, and sooner or later, the farmers will have justice. Please stop counting money and help us, not with, not with the money, but with the struggle to save the South Central Farm. Thank you.
Next speaker, Dele, is Dele here? Luigi? Mr. Dowd? Is, is Dele or Luigi here? Please.
Your name, sir?
My name is Luigi, happy to be here using the democratic process, and I would do wish it would be more of a two-way street, and I hope someday soon we'll have an agenda item while we'll be hearing what the city council thinks, and have the city council being our friends. Let's see, last time I stood here, I spoke about the shame that this was all an unnecessary process, given that Mr. Horowitz's suit towards the city ended up being meritless in the eyes of the court. I'm not sure where Ms. Jan Perry is standing right now, but I left her alone last time because she was going through a trying morning with somebody following her, she had a restraining order on. But it's, what can you say in a minute, really? This mistake has to be redressed, this community garden is a project from the future, and the community needs more than the infusion of dollars than Jan Perry's been so good at. The community really does need more.
Thank you. Mr. Dowd, followed by Sylvia Lynn Hawkins.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, first of all, I think it's only fair if you're going to have 10 minutes of public comment, how about having 10 people have one minute each? Don't keep the clock just ticking, you're going to end up with only seven. Now, on Wednesday, I was mentioned as being out of order for promoting a CD. As I recall, I was promoting Van Nuys, the streets up there, I was promoting the remote location, numerous things, and if it's not the city's business, if my CD is not the business of the city, then why did they come down to Venice Beach where I perform and sell me a permit? I mean, get a, zoom in on that, that's the City of Los Angeles permit, so you made me your business, and the CD is part of that business, and I'm being discriminated against. I'm also against this whole sister city thing, too, because now we've got an American ally bombing our latest sister city, that's, that's tough.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hawkins?
Good morning, everyone, my name is Ms. Sylvia Hawkins. This is the last day for council action in locating more bedrooms or one-bedroom apartments in different locations in Los Angeles area. We must delete all universities that are going out of business and use all on-campus and off-campus apartments to rent out to the public people. Again, we must be aware of the illegal people, immigrants, that are using only credit cards to pay for the on- and off-campus, whether they are dorms or off-campus apartment, which they are now using cars that are cheating. Destroying these schools is okay, but not these one-bedroom and apartment that is needed for public living. The resolution for hiring, pardon me, for housing is not reopening Section 8 with yearly reselling application or using subsidized rent coupons yearly. Again, maintenance is high-
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Next speaker is Zuma Dog. That will be our last speaker.
Yeah, yeah, because Zuma Dog's a showstopper, I am the finale, you can't top this act, it's Zuma Dog, I'm running for city council, y'all, because of all the support I'm getting from showing up here. You have stories from the LA pla, you got the plane deal, you got, they're writing about me in Cleveland, they're writing about me in French, but what I would like to talk about is that, first of all, tune into KABC tonight at 10:00 PM, I'll be talking about these things covered under the Brown Act. Eric G., Eric Garcetti, excuse me, yesterday I was appearing as Gene Simmons under the Brown Act, and you cut me off right away, you said you couldn't hear, I watched the playback, it sounded perfectly good to me. That's a violation of my First Amendment, so I will be the plaintiff once again, causing a civil suit, and I will be addressing, I will be contacting your office, because I'd like to know why you cut Gene Simmons off, the bass player of Kiss, who was under the Brown Act speaking, there was no reason. If you'd like to address that right now, I'd like to know, because people watch the video, it's on YouTube, you can watch this Brown Act stuff, go to zumadog.com and decide for yourself if Eric Garcetti cut me off for no reason. Next time you cut me off and violate my First Amendment, it's going to be a citizen's arrest, y'all. Zuma Dog is the new sheriff in town, and it's going to be a citizen's arrest for violating my First Amendment. ZumaDog.com, hooty-hoo!
Thank you very much. Mr. City Attorney, would you like to respond to his comments, please?
Yes, Madam President, just for the record, the feed was cut off because he was causing a disruption to the council meeting.
Thank you very much. I'd like to just acknowledge the other people who were here for public comment period, Velinda Jo Wright, Michael Wood, Ricky Mantle, Frank Tamborello, and Aracela Talota. Thank you for, for being here. Madam Clerk, next item.
Next item, Madam President, there is a special one motion that has been presented, moved by Councilmember Weiss, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam President. On July 11, 2006, Anna Intariano was shot and killed near Cadillac Avenue and Guthrie Street. Immediate action is required for council to offer a reward for information leading to the arrest and conviction of the suspect in order to safeguard the community. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the subsequent motion.
Thank you, that item is, findings are before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll on the findings, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
Thank you, I'd like to acknowledge, Mr. Wesson?
Yes, thank you, Madam President and members. A few days ago, I adjourned in the memory of this young 16-year-old girl, and I informed the council at this point in time that I would, along with the support of my colleague, Jack Weiss, that we would introduce a reward motion for $50,000 to find the, the individuals responsible for this hideous act. She was walking home from summer school 10 minutes before 1:00 PM with a group of friends, and she was gunned down within a blink of the eye. It has destroyed a, a single mother who has struggled to raise her children. The Anna's brother has dealt with this very difficultly the last couple of days, and what we want to do here, and what I urge you to vote for, is this reward so that we could create an incentive to find these murderers and to do everything that we can to ensure that this stops. Just last night, about a block and a half from the same place where she was gunned down, there was a gang-related shooting, killing of two young men 20 years old. So this area is obviously in the hot time of the summer, so we need to do what we can to cool it down. With that, I will ask my colleague, Mr. Weiss, if he would not say a word or two.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Mr. Wesson and I share a border in that corner of our district where these shootings have occurred, and we do want the public to come forward with any information they have about Anna Intariano's killing, as well as the two killings last night. His office and my office have worked very closely with the LAPD, and we're confident that the LAPD in the coming days and weeks is going to step up all of their efforts against gang activity in this area. Thank you, Mr. Wesson, for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss and Mr. Wesson. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
That item's been approved. Madam Clerk, next item?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those will be posted and referred.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements today, colleagues? Any announcements? Mr. Rosenthal?
Yeah, I just want to announce that Greg Smith and Bernard Parks and myself are leaving, some have already left, to Shanghai, I'm leaving in the morning, to look at their Magliff High-Speed Rail Train, and then Greg Smith and I are off to Japan to look at some of their bullet trains. As we continue our paralysis of gridlock, we really need to look at what other people are doing around the world and see if there's applications here in Los Angeles, and I, and I want you all to know that we'll be gone for just a short week, and we'll come back with hopefully some insight into some mass transit. Thank you, Madam President.
Any, yes, Mr. Wesson?
Thank you, Madam President and members, I want to announce tonight that there will be a candlelight vigil for Anna Intariano at the Palms West Minister Presbyterian Church, which is located on 2908 Robertson Place. That vigil will take place tonight at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Madam President, I just wanted to congratulate the Astic Fire Crew for opening up a new office at the Pico Union intersection as a gang intervention and job training program. They'll be developing new partnerships with our Men and Women in Blue, the LAPD, our businesses, our community advocates, to try to get ahead of the gang issue to prevent the tragedies that occur in our city. So I want to thank Enrique and his staff for branching out into the southern part of the district, the Pico Union area. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Weisar?
Thank you, Madam President. And this Saturday, Council District 14 will be launching Operation Conservation. We'll be partnering with the DWP to help our constituents conserve energy and save money on their electric bills by distributing thousands of energy-efficient, compact fluorescent light bulbs to our residents. The program is designed to completely eliminate the proposed first-year impact of DWP's proposed rate increase with the change of these light bulbs. It's Saturday from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Anyone interested in volunteering or needing more information should contact my office or meet up, meet up with us at the staging area for the event at the El Sereno Senior Center at 4818 Klamath Street in El Sereno. We'll meet there and go door-to-door to distribute these light bulbs. Thank you very much. And also-
Yes.
For Councilmember Tony Cardenas, he's having an emergency preparedness fair this Saturday, July 15, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Marvin Broad Building, 6262 Van Nuys Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know Ms. Perry would like us to have item 18 and 20 go forthwith, Madam Clerk. Do we have any adjourning motions? Adjourning motions? If I could, everyone, please rise. Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, Madam President, Red Buttons, he was a friend of mine, I got to know him over the years, an incredible human being, he just died on Thursday at the age of 87. One of the brightest, most creative comedians. He was born in New York on February 5, 1919. He performed in all kinds of Broadway plays and musicals, the Academy of Radio and Television Arts and Science named Buttons, the comedian of the year in 1954. He's appeared in over 30 movies, he did a stint during World War II, he survived by his children Amy and Adam, and his brother and sister. The family asked that any donations be made to the West Side German Shepherd Rescue of Los Angeles. What I loved the most about him was he had a sense of humor on everything, no matter how serious the issue is, he would come up to me and tell me a joke about something, and add something that just put a different spin on it. May he rest in peace.
Thank you very much, colleagues. I'd like, if we could, adjourn in memory of Michael Vincent Guzman, who died July 8, 2006, he was 32 years old. Michael Vincent Guzman, aged 32, died July 8, 2006 in a boating accident. A cancer survivor, he was a decorated member of the El Segundo Police Department, assigned to the Los Angeles International Airport. His father, Victor Guzman, was a member of the Los Angeles Police Department. Michael's wife, Hattie Ike Guzman, is a teacher at Stonehurst Elementary School in the Los Angeles Unified School District. Hattie's parents, Bill and Tina Ike, of the Equestrian Community in Shadow Hills, are part of my district, a wonderful family, it just has been devastating to them to have this loss. They'd only been married, Hattie and Michael had only been married a little over a year when this accident occurred. His wife, he survived by his wife, Hattie Ike Guzman, his mother, Sharon Guzman, his brothers, Joseph and Donald Guzman, and two nieces, Elise and Iris. Our thoughts go out to them and our condolences. Madam Clerk? Thank you. Meeting's adjourned. Meeting's adjourned.